Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is February 5th, 2019, and it is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, invite you to stand and join us in an invocation tonight led by Pastor Ron Lawler, Family Bible Church, and immediately following that, I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'd like to pray with me. Our Father in Heaven, again tonight, we give you thanks for the privilege we have of living in this beautiful place. Thank you for all these men and women who have volunteered their time and have gone to the effort to run for council and been elected. We ask that you would grant them wisdom and discernment, that their decisions tonight would be wise and effective, and we pray for the peace and harmony of our city. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Ron. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome our council and staff and our citizens here in attendance and those that are watching us on television. We have a complete council here tonight, so under the agenda, I think that staff has asked that we, staff recommends moving item number 8A, which is ordinance number 1866, the budget amendment number one, and as to the 2019-2020 budget, to move that to position number 8E. So we'll have a chance to discuss, I think, the ladder truck and a few things there. So, oh, I'm sorry, we're moving 7A to 8E. Thanks Carla. So, do we need a motion for that? Okay. Counselor Servatius?
I move to move agenda item 7A to 8E.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, to move agenda item number 7A to 8E, motion by Counselor Servatius, second by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we'll accept the approval of the agenda as amended, unless I don't see any other changes. Tonight, we're going to immediately go to the citizen comment period. So now is the time that citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are properly, or recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone, and please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So citizen comment period. Mr. Hovey?
Good evening, Mayor Severns, members of the city council. My name's Hal Hovey, I'm a resident of Oak Harbor. I would like to comment on item 4B on the consent agenda, specifically the minutes from the council workshop on January 23rd. I attended that council workshop on the 23rd and I came away from it very disappointed. It became apparent that there was no real clear plan for the grand reopening of Windjammer Park, at least at that time, and I even got indication that there was some wavering on previously firm commitment to reopen the park on the 4th of July. Furthermore, it became pretty clear that even if the park is open for the 4th of July, that the city was considering not allowing the Chamber to host their 4th of July festival in the park. Excuse me. I followed the Windjammer Park plans pretty closely, and I'm kind of dumbfounded that eight months after the city population was promised that the park would be back open this summer, that, you know, we still don't really have a commitment from the city to open it. There've been banners up for months saying there was a grand opening this summer, and it became clear at the workshop that maybe that grand opening was going to be postponed. It kind of surprises me that eight months after the commitment was made to have the park open for 4th of July, that it still was not clear whether or not the grass would be ready. You know, grass doesn't grow any faster or slower now than it did eight months ago, so I don't know why that information wasn't available back in March of 2018 when the commitment was made. I certainly think that it highlights a continuing problem that we have seen with the development of the sewer plant in the park, and that is that somehow word is not getting to people who need to know about what needs to be done in order to make all the parts come together. And I realize this is a big city, there's a lot of moving parts, it's really tough to do a lot of these jobs and commit the time that's necessary to them, but how come it wasn't evident before that March announcement, or maybe somebody came forward in April, or maybe in May, and said, "Oh, by the way, it takes longer for grass to grow and we're not going to be able to have the carnival in the park." You know, we keep having these last minute surprises, and it's frustrating. I'm sure it's very frustrating for you guys since you're running the show. In closing, I'd like to ask for the answers to two questions that came out unresolved from that workshop. The first question is, is Windjammer Park going to be open for the 4th of July? The second question is, is the Chamber going to be holding the 4th of July carnival in Windjammer Park? That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Hal, Mr. Hovey. Other citizen comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close citizen comment period. Yes, Counselor Olmberg?
Thank you Mayor. Would it be appropriate to give Mr. Hovey a comment or reply? I thought it was pretty smart away when we left that workshop that the park was going to be open for the 4th, but the carnival at the election of the Chamber was going to be down at the field in Bay Shore, and that the fireworks are going to happen in the park. Is anything different than that that came out of that meeting? Maybe I'm misunderstanding something.
See, so the plan will be that the park will be open to our citizens to come and view the fireworks. The, as Mr. Olmberg has said, the Chamber of Commerce has decided to hold their carnival and some of their other events at Flintstone Park and to utilize the property on Bay Shore Avenue like they did last year. And we had, the discussion was how far along that sod would be to support the heavy carnival equipment this year, and so I think in light of the discussion, I was not at the workshop, but I've viewed it and certainly talked to staff, that the plan is that the fireworks will be, I believe they're on a barge this year, but citizens will be able to come to the park on the 4th of July certainly and watch those. In fact, we intend to have a, an opening of the water feature, the water park down there earlier in June, and that'll be a partial opening. The entire park won't be, there will be some of the parks still fenced at that time because of the sod and the growth. So, I think I've covered that, yeah. Okay? That answer, okay? Seeing no other comments, then we'll move on to our consent agenda, section four. We have, looks like, what is it, A through G? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, we'll have the consent agenda approved then as presented. Moving on to, oh, that's A through H, I'm sorry. Okay? Oh. A through H? Okay. Should've flipped my page here. And we'll move on to mayor, council, and staff comments. Actually, I do have a few comments tonight. First, I think is the new artwork, which is really not so new, we've had it here for a while. It was, the high school then came and removed it and took it to the college for a show that went on there. I have a letter here that, from Kit Christopherson from the Oak Harbor High School, to mayor and city council, "This year, we have excellent students and they do excellent work. I don't qualify that with anything other than the art you see before you. Each one has a story, of course, and a student that labored when they could have been entertained, deliberated over artistic choices, when they could have been socializing. These particular works might be a tad on a smaller size, but when you look close, I think you will see craftsmanship, practice, and experimentation. In short, these students have voice. Please thoroughly enjoy these pieces and thank you, as always, for supporting our students." Kit Christopherson. So we have Lilies and Primroses by Lorelei Snyder, Happy Accident by Cherie Miller, I guess it is Cherie, Palace of Versailles by Belinda, or, excuse me, by Kelly Gruenwald, Save the Bees by Belinda Larsona, Decomposition by Olivia Wait, and finally, Coy Dragon by Hannah Samuels. So thank you to the students at Oak Harbor High School. I also have some employees. Now, last year, I recognized employees for the city of Oak Harbor that have been with us for 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years with the city. So I'll start with the employees that have 10 years of service, and we have Lisa Powers In our police department, we have Stephanie Lee Saunders in our marina, Neil Ketchum also has 10 years at the marina, Jennifer Gravel, police department, 10 years, Manny Silvera, police department, 10 years, Ryan Lang, fire department, 10 years, and we've got, from our council and the dais up here, we've got Rick Olmberg, city council, 10 years, Beth Muns, city council, 10 years, and myself, 10 years with the city. So now, we'll go to 15 years. We have Andrew Carroll, fire department, we have Tom Cross, fire department, we have Don Bayer, captain, fire department. Did I say that right? Byron Boss, Public Works, 15 years, Tony Sloick, police department, 15 years, Ron Esparza, police department, 15 years, Public Works, Brad Gluth, in engineering. And now to 20 years, Mel Lowell-Moll, police department, Keith Jamison, Public Works, Steve Powers, Development Services, Kathy Rosen, Public Works, Phil Matthews, Public Works, Mike Boonstra, Public Works, and that's 20 years. Thank you very much. Now we'll go to 25 years. Dennis Wright, Fire Department, and I think that's the only 25 year. So now to 30 years. Steve Beebe, Public Works, 30 years. And finally, Hank Knightam, 35 years, Parks Manager. I can't thank our employees enough for their loyalty and the hard work that they put in. Thank you very much and congratulations for a lot of years. Like to thank Mayor Protem for running the workshop in my absence this last month. And then finally, I've got a special thank you on yesterday, Monday morning, you know, it was a little icy, and I got an email at, just after 8 o'clock yesterday morning, and it came from Scott Smith, who is the site manager at NAS Whidby, and it said, "Mayor, on Super Bowl night, we had a major sewage lift station failure, unprecedented, and ran out of in-house and commercial options to triage before base operations kicked in this morning. We were scrambling for any option. A call to the city inquiring about renting of actor truck led to your Public Works Department and Steve Beebe. Their idea to deploy the city's portable pipeline system prevented a major multi-day impact to NAS Whidby Island and operating commands. Details in the attached document." He sent a document along with this, but he says, "As the base maintenance site manager, I cannot thank your Public Works team enough. Steve personally provided technical guidance and supported the equipment loading late at night. We owe the city big time and hope to reciprocate down the road. I will be meeting with Kathy to ensure we cover all costs for the city and we will return the equipment in very good shape. I have relayed this to base leadership and more will be coming from that channel. Look forward to seeing you at the task force meeting this week." Scott and I have talked, and he just talked about the amazing support, and of course, it was a cold snowy evening, and the only, the only report I could, or the only thing I could say was, we do have a fabulous team of employees, and Public Works so often is behind the scenes setting things up, don't get the kind of kudos they deserve, but this is stepping up to a partnership that we've had for years with the Navy, and it doesn't get any more special than that, to be able to do it and save them from what would have been a catastrophe, I think, for a while from the sounds of it. So, kudos to Public Works, and I'm sure Steve maybe got some help too, and I know Kathy was involved in, I'm sure perhaps even other Public Works, so make sure and pass the word that they were sure happy and excited for that help. So thank you. Any, any, let me see, I think that concludes my comments, so we'll go to council. Yes, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the police department, especially the chief, for inviting us to their second annual award ceremony, and it was really, really nice. It is so nice to see others honored in other departments, and it was with class, very, very well done and very deserving to many people in that department, so I was so thankful that they had included us.
Great. Yes, Counsel Weisner?
Thank you Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Hovey for coming tonight and commenting. It's always great for the public to take the time. I know you attend a lot of meetings Hal, and I certainly appreciate you. I did want to comment just a little bit on some of the things that came out of the workshop involving the 4th of July. You know, while I'm certainly disappointed that the Chamber has decided to hold the 4th of July festivities elsewhere other than in the park, I'm certainly excited that we got a splash park that we're going to be doing a soft opening for the weekend after the schools get out. We are going to have a beautiful facility when we get through all these bumps and grinds. I am certainly, however, disappointed that I feel as though we did let possibly the Chamber and some of the community down by not having a plan and not having the park open for the 4th of July like we committed, and so I did want to share that, my feelings about that. With that said, you know, we're going to have a beautiful new park when this gets done. We're going to have a beautiful splash park running throughout the summer for the kids to enjoy, and it sounds like we're going to have some sod down for some of the activities to take place later in the summer, so we'll turn these lemons into lemonade and have a wonderful event this summer and, you know, and have a park to enjoy for many years to come. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, council comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to city administrator comments, and Mr. Olbourn is at the podium.
Yes, I'm prepared to give a long speech, no. I have the next item after, so it makes sense for me to just be up here for both items. This week, I plan on attending the Parks Legislative Days this Thursday to advocate for the city's regional park youth activities field grant, the $350,000 grant that we have in the budget. It just missed the governor's budget, so we need to advocate to get it funded, and so it's a really important project and really important for this, the region, and so I appreciate all the staff helping and helping me prepare my packet material, and look forward to meeting with the legislators and advocate for that project. Two, my second item is, I've kind of discussing with some of the council members, I'm working on a lot of items, and so I think I'm going to move towards probably a monthly written report, and I plan on doing that at least a minimum at the next upcoming council meeting to kind of give you an update of all the various things I have my hands into and get your input on that. And then lastly, I thank the city clerk for putting out a calendar again, highlighting the upcoming city council dates that you need to be aware of. That concludes my report.
Okay, then, yes, Counsel Reisner?
Thank you. Just quickly, if there's anything that, well, we or I can do to help you on Thursday, if we could include something or write up something, if there's just anything you need in terms of the advocacy for parks, the regional parks specifically, just let me know.
Yeah, any of the council members, we can send out a little note to you, and certainly you're welcome to contact the legislators in our District 10 and advocate for it, so, and then also the governor's office and advocating for, I think all that would help.
For sure. Yeah, it would be helpful to see what materials you're going with so that we can, you know, have a unified front when we're sending our...
Okay. I'll make a note of that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Mr. Osborne, the Chamber today sent out a flash brief because they have some legislative that's going to affect a lot of the small businesses in town. It was due by 5 o'clock, your testimony, but it wouldn't help if you did not get that email, I can be sure that you get a copy of it, but it never hurts to reiterate what was said, even though maybe one deadline went by. We won't know how it turned out today for a day or two, but we need to help our businesses in town, that it was how they do shifts and can't do this and can't do that, and it's really tying their hands for someone that has like three employees or four. And there are quite a few businesses in town that do. So I don't know if you're on the blast from the Chamber or not, but it was very well written and done with the facts and the legislators, who to contact, and what bill it was. I'm sorry, I don't remember what House bill it was, but I can be sure, get it to you, and I know Christine Cribb would love to, but it never hurts to have that other information in your other pocket when you're just talking, so.
Yeah. Also, good point, on the calendar date there, the February 13th to the 15th is the Association of Washington Cities Action Days, and I think the mayor, I, and councilman, our council member, Wassenger, is attending, so certainly, we've got our six main areas, we'll probably add two other areas, and I certainly welcome to some other areas as we go along that we need to ask them to focus on. My visit this week, I'll probably just mainly just focus on that YAF since it'll be, I'll be with park areas, but I'll be back the next week, and I've never been to Olympia yet, and I get it two weeks in a row, so it kind of stacks up there, but we've already done the prep, and I think we're going to get some material tomorrow for the Navy issue that we've talked about, and also, we've been also pushing for, when I went to the Council of Governments, the increasing of the construction date for the roundabouts on 20, I think is a good project that we should advocate, that wasn't an original six items.
Okay. Okay, we will conclude the administrator comments and move to number six on our agenda, public hearings and meetings. To speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting, says please sign in, but I'll certainly give you a chance whether you signed in on the sheet or not. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone, and please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. Item number 6A is Resolution 1904 declaring the Sleeper Road property surplus. Mr. Olbourn?
Yeah, there's a lot of good information in the packet on the Sleeper Road property. The city has owned it for some time, quite a while. I think it was purchased for mining, and it just never made sense for the city to go ahead and do that. It's way outside of city limits. We last discussed it at the November 2018 council workshop, gave a number of options, and it looked like the council was leaning towards declaring the property surplus so we can go ahead and sell the property. We've had a number of interest in the property. One good thing about the news here with being a public format is people, we had some interest before that, and then we've had some interest shown after we've got the publicity that this property was possibly for sale, so it's all ready for you to conduct the hearing and go ahead, and if the council wants to see through it, they can go ahead and make a motion to pass that resolution and declare its surplus.
Okay, so we'll open that public hearing at this time and ask if there's anybody from the public here that would like to speak to this? Mr. Solan?
Thank you, counsel. My name is John Solan. I am the treasurer of the PBY Memorial Foundation and also a trustee, been doing that basically for the past five years. I just wanted to advise everyone, I'm sure you probably are aware, that we have submitted a letter of intent for the museum to be one of the candidates considered for purchasing that property for our future museum site, and if it's appropriate, I just would like to ask a question of the process, assuming the resolution is passed, as to what sort of the timeline and next steps would be, if that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. I think our city attorney can probably answer that question?
Sure. So at this point, if council decides that they are going to surplus the property, we are going to get an updated appraisal to determine what we should list it for, and then we're going to go ahead and list it ourselves and give people an opportunity to go ahead and basically put in a bid and tell us what they're willing to pay for it. So, that's our process at this point.
So, anyone else for comment on this? From the public? Okay? Seeing none, we'll take it to council. Mayor Protem?
I move to approve...
Wait, I think we have some comments or questions here. Counsel Weisner?
Thank you Mayor. I do have a question. I noticed you gave us a great chart about the revenue that's been generated by the property and the expenses associated with the property, but I don't see any acquisition cost. Do we know what kind of acquisition cost we had?
Sale cost?
No. Purchase cost when we purchased the...
It's been quite a long time ago. I don't think we have, we took the data from what we had in the system, and that's what the finance director went ahead and prepared for you. It was purchased probably in the 50s, so...
That far back, huh?
Oh yeah, it's quite a lo, I think it's in the report. I'm still learning everything, so I don't have a photographic memory yet, but I believe it was way back in the 50s here. So I think I must be accurate because I don't have any counsel...
Didn't show anything before his age, but I'm...
Yeah, right here, since the 50s, right in the report. Yeah. So we've owned it some, quite some long ago, so we didn't really have any information on the purchase of that property. It appears like I mentioned in the report that it was intent was to use it for mining, but we've had a lot of analysis on it, that's why it was quite, if you look at it, we've had quite a lot of analysis on this property because of the complexity of getting the value of the mining. We can update it because the data from the last couple of years ago on the mining where they did all the testing and everything will stay the same, they'll just get it up to market rate, and we talked about, when we talked about the possibility of mining it, and then, so we'll have that option out there too and talk about that, so, because we could have somebody mine it and then turn around and release it to them for mining and give it back to us, so that might be an option we can look at when we go through the process. it back to us, so that might be an option we can look at when we go through the process of, of surplusing the property.
So, it's possible we may look at the lease for the gravel reserves?
Well, the data will have that in there, so, but how we make it available, I think the flexibility is there with the resolution. Nikki, you can help me out here, make sure I'm in the right direction here.
I guess I was not, I was not aware that we were considering doing the lease, the mining, the mineral rights. My understanding is that we were updating the appraisal to market value to go ahead and liquidate.
Had we done any research at all in the, the option of leasing out the mineral rights?
I think we talked it last time. I guess we can open it up, our preference is, is to sell it. I mean, it will have the data in it for mineraling if somebody wants to purchase it and mineral it because it has quite a lot of data in that appraisal.
And in the end, are you, either of you aware, have we ever logged this parcel before or is this the first time?
Oh, yeah. It's in, oh, before that? I don't, I'm not aware that we logged it before.
2015, so on the 50, 60 years that we've owned it, it's probably what, when the timber grew, I'm assuming?
I'm not aware. We did plan it for future harvesting, but it's going to be quite a long time before we harvest it again, but that's the...
Forty years or so?
Yeah, that's what we took out, so they, they forested when they, when they harvested, and you can see the money we made from it, so we made quite a lot of...
And of course, right now with it being in the city rules, it's not generating any tax revenue.
It's outside of city limits, so we talked about park possibly as an alternative use, but it would probably make a nice little more to our, our trail park and cyclist park, but it's, it's outside of city limits, so it won't count, and it's not as long as contiguous to the city, so that's what we, we went through the various options, and, and that was one of them, and, and that's why I can't, when the, from the workshop, it seemed like the council wanted to go in the direction of just surplusing it, so that's what we wrote it up here, and it does have the flexibility of disposing what we feel is the best interest, so the mayor, so he, we can go in that direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Ombert?
Thank you, Mayor. I support surplusing this for a variety of reasons, but also, Ms. Barza, the, Mr. Solon's question really wasn't asked, he was looking for kind of a timeline, a frame, you gave us a, that we're going to go through the appraisal, we're going to go through the listing process, the, can you give us a better timeline from what you expect start to finish on putting this out for bids?
So I'm going to have to rely on Kathy to some extent. We contacted the original appraiser to update it, and we got a quote to update the appraisal, and in terms of timeline for the updated appraisal, that, that's something that I haven't had communication with the appraisal.
I don't know if we actually can get that out of that, it just depends on how those do this.
Often those appraisals can take six weeks, eight weeks, and if he's already done this, this is an update one on that. So, in brackets, approximately, we're looking at four to six months before this thing will be in the public, be available to the public? Would you say that's reasonable expectation?
Should we go with two to six months? Let's be a little bit more flexible.
I think, I don't know that it went to four, I think it was three.
Okay.
But in brackets anyway, so that we have some target dates in there.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, if, if the PBY Museum is very interested in this thing, you know, timing's going to be important to them too about having the funds available to compete with other bids.
Yes, but to some extent, we are in a holding pattern until we get that appraisal back, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I remember the workshop where we talked extensively about this property, and we have logged it, and we seem to have gotten out of it what we're going to get in that particular area for quite a number of years, and then we looked at the cost of mining and gathering minerals, minerals from this property vice what we would get, or net, and it was deemed at that time that it wasn't really worth it as far as what we could get from the property and the cost it would take to extract that. So I think that it not being worth it for us, I don't know if I would at this time pursue looking to lease this for the mineral rights, so at this point, I'm going to also recommend or support surplusing this property for, for sale.
Anyone else? Mayor Protim?
I'll make a motion. There's no more comments. I move to approve Resolution 19-04 declaring the Sleeper Road property surplus and authorize the mayor to proceed with sale of the property.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, and the motion reads exactly like it's recommended in the packet. Motion by Mayor Protim, second by Councilor Wassinger. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. O'Bourn. We will move on to item number six B then, which is Resolution Number 1907, Surplus List 2019. Public Works Director Kathy Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What you have before you tonight with Resolution 1907 is a list of surplus items that were purchased with utility funds. In order to surplus those items, we need to hold a public hearing, take, then council considers that input and makes a decision whether or not to adopt Resolution 1907, so what we're asking you to do tonight is hold the public hearing, consider that input, and then we're recommending that you adopt Resolution 1907, surplusing, declaring property that was acquired by utility funds as surplus. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and at this time, we'll, we'll have that public hearing and ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, bring up to city council. Any questions or any, Councilor Heisen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a kind of a technical question. What's the difference between, like procedurally, between surplusing things purchased with utility funds and not? Because the non-utility purchased was in the consent agenda, and then this is a separate list.
There is an RCW that requires that any items that were purchased with utility funds, if we want to dispose of them, we have to hold a public hearing on it. It's just a, it's an RCW.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Resolution 1907, the surplus list 2019, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1907 as presented. Motion by Councilor Larson, second by Councilor Heisen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
That too, passes unanimously. Okay, we will now go to seven B, which is Resolution 1906, intention to assume Oak Harbor Transportation Benefit District Number One per RCW 3674, and we have our city attorney, Nikki Asparza. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My first item this evening is Resolution 1906, which if passed, will declare the council's intention to assume the Oak Harbor Transportation Benefit District Number One, which is a separate quasi-municipal corporation. The city council passed ordinance 1835 back in May of 2018 and created the district in order to access alternate funding mechanisms for road projects. The Transportation Benefit District has met on several occasions to talk about how these road projects would be funded, but no levies or, or financial obligations have been undertaken by the board, so now is a good time to consider whether or not the council wants to absorb the district and make it a part of the city instead of leaving it as a separate quasi-municipal corporation. So since the law has changed a few years ago, a lot of the cities that have TBDs have absorbed them. Certainly, the finance director prefers this approach because it makes it much easier to do the books, instead of having to do two separate sets of books, she can just have a separate fund for the district, and it will simplify the administration of the funding and of create efficiencies, allow staff to more easily work through all of the issues that come with this district, just create, use it as a part of the city, it'll be, it'll be easier. So if this, this resolution is passed, the next step is a resolution, or I'm sorry, an ordinance that will do away with the TBD. That will be set for March 19th, which will also be the time of the public hearing. The public hearing has to be noticed at least, at least two weeks prior, and this resolution sets the date of the hearing and requires that notice. So at this point, it's staff's recommendation to approve Resolution 1906.
Before we do that, we'll see if the public has any comment about this, any input or questions? Okay, seeing none, city council? Any questions or motions or? Councilor Ombert?
Seeing no questions, for anything else, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 1906.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 1906, motion made by Councilor Ombert and second by Mayor Protim Muns. Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. So that was seven B. We will go on to eight A. This is section number eight is contracts and agreements, so eight A is a construction contract award to Interwest Construction, Inc., SR20 Banta Road Water Main Replacement Project, and we have our city engineer, Mr. Bridges, here.
Thank you. We're here tonight to recommend the award of the bid we received for the, let me make sure, the name of the project, the SR20 Banta Road Water Main Replacement to Interwest Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,395,654.74, and authorize at the, during the construction, if needed, myself to approve change orders up to $100,000 in total. On January 29th, we received three bids for the project. The aforementioned bid from Interwest Construction, another bid from SRV Construction for $1,589,639.67, and a third bid from C. Johnson Construction Incorporated for $2,187,641.85. We had an engineer's estimate of $1,645,000 for the project. We reviewed the bids for completeness and responsiveness and found them to be appropriate, and it is our recommendation to award the bid to, I believe it was ISI Construction, Interwest Construction, excuse me. And I'll stand for questions.
Okay, first, see if we have anybody from the public who'd like to, okay, seeing none, council, yes, Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was glad when you talked about the wording of this recommended action, that you said authorizing the city engineer to execute contract change orders up to $100,000 in total?
Correct.
Because when I read that, initially, I had highlighted that because the, it just said execute contract change orders up to $100,000, and so if there were multiple ones of those, so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that, because that's 7% of the contract right there, if there were multiple contract changes up to $100,000 each, that would be quite the cost overrun, so is there going to be language that ensures that that's in total, because the way this is written in our packet is a little vague?
I think the direction's here, so we'll follow the way the motion, and I think I would add the word "total" in there.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, Councilor Ombert?
Thank you. You know, I'm with Mr. Larson on that one too, and typically, we have a limit on the total change orders on the contract, so can we have language that just says that we're awarding this for $1,395,654, and we always have up to 7% or 10% or $100,000 without coming to the contract, to the council? We've, we've always had a limit, because I think the way Mr. Larson even expressed that, this could be multiple change orders.
I would just recommend adding the word "total" in there, and we'll try to be more clear in the future.
With, with a total change order not to exceed $100,000?
$100,000, yeah. It doesn't have to, it's close to a percentage, but yeah, I think staff is comfortable with $100,000.
It comes out to just about 7%, which is, seems reasonable, especially on an underground project like this.
Other? Yes, Councilor?
If there's no further comments or anything, I'll, I'll make a motion and authorize the, a motion to authorize an award of the construction contract for the SR20 Banta Road Water Main Replacement to Interwest Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,395,654.74, and not to exceed any change orders beyond $100,000, without the approval of the council.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second that's pretty close to the recommended action, and did you get that wording, Carla? Not to, not to exceed?
Not to exceed change orders of $100,000 without the approval of the council.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, so we've got a motion by coun, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Councilor Heisen, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion doesn't explicitly authorize this, authorize the city engineer to execute said change orders. Is that implied, or do we need to specify that it's the city engineer that's authorized to make said change orders? I mean, we all know what that means, but...
It should be the city engineer, because the city engineer is not typically authorized to make change or, or make contracts up to that.
Okay, so can you read the motion for us, Carla?
...to authorize the award of the construction contract for the SR20 Banta Road Water Main Replacement to Interwest Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,395,654.74, and authorize the city engineer to execute contract change orders not to exceed $100,000 without consent of the council.
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure that was in there.
Thank you.
Is that all right? Okay, so the motion? I think the motion was made by Councilor Ombert and seconded by Councilor Servadis. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously. That was number eight A. Now we'll move on to eight B.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm going to recuse myself from this item, the seller has a contractual agreement with a broker in my office.
Item number eight B is purchase and sale agreement, Matern Property, and we have our city engineer, or our city, city attorney back at the, gosh, just got a new title, sorry about that.
That could be fun.
Sorry, Nikki.
So this item is the purchase and sale agreement of the Matern Property. I came to you in executive session a few weeks ago, and we had a conversation about offer price on four acres of wetlands that are adjacent to the north of our Seventh Avenue Wetland property, and today I'm coming to you with a purchase and sale agreement. I had conversations with the listing agent about a sale price, and we came to an agreement at $80,000. The property is listed at $105,000, and we were able to negotiate $80,000. Staff believes that this piece of property is important to acquire because it is a part, or it is adjacent to our wetlands, and we know that it's important to protect those Seventh Avenue wetlands for a lot of reasons, including but not limited to the hydrologic buffering effect that they have protecting the properties that are in the southern end of the city, making sure that we're treating and processing the storm water and, and letting it leave the wetlands at a slower pace. Another reason why acquiring this property is important is because our new NPDS permit is going to make requirements that cause us to acquire property and spend money to further protect our basins. We're going to need to address our storm water on the basin... We're going to need to address our storm water on the basin level. Acquiring this property may allow us to get ahead of certain requirements of our NPDS In addition, part of our sewer comp plan says that we need to run a trunk line down the valley. And in order to do that, we're going to need to acquire property or easement rights. If we acquire this four acres, we won't need to acquire an easement across those four acres, because we'll already own it. If we put in a sewer trunk line, we're going to need an access road, and there will be an opportunity there for some recreational opportunities. If we put an access road in there, we could have a path through there. County has expressed some interest in connecting to Island County Trails, and so that might be an opportunity to partner with Island County. Staff does believe that there are a lot of benefits to acquiring the matern property and would recommend that council authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement and any closing documents necessary to finalize the sale.
Thank you, Nikki. So we'll turn to the public, see if there's any questions or input, or, Mr. Hovey?
Good evening again. My name's Hal Hovey Still. I'd like to thank the city for bringing this real estate purchase before the council and as agenda item in the open public session, so we could have an opportunity for public comment. I know that typically, certainly in the last couple of years that I've been coming to the meetings, the real estate purchases are typically handled immediately following an executive session without any public discussion. So thank you very much for listening to my concerns and bringing it out for opportunity to talk and ask questions. I do have two questions about this purchase. First, was it already budgeted for 2019? And in paragraph five of the purchase contract, the contract indicates that the city has, it says the city council has authorized the property acquisition by condemnation, which is eminent domain. And I might have missed that meeting where the city council approved that, but perhaps that's what this meeting is, is the approval of the contract is also the approval to take the property by eminent domain if the contract does not agree to. Thank you, those are the only questions I have.
Okay, Nikki?
I can answer both of those questions. First of all, we budgeted, well, stormwater budgeted $250,000 for property acquisition for storm drain, for stormwater improvements in the 2019 budget. We spent $160,000 plus closing costs on the right properties, and this property is, is going to cost us $80,000. So it is in fact budgeted. Second issue, paragraph five discusses eminent domain. Paragraph five also has a follow-up that says that the city council will pass an, an ordinance authorizing that if necessary. It's actually oftentimes a negotiating tool, because it saves excise tax to the seller. So that is the reason for paragraph five.
Okay, any other public comments or questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll, yes, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to applaud the efforts of the city staff who have brought this forward. This is another example of really good people getting out ahead of an issue and not waiting until there's a problem. This makes so much sense ecologically, financially, possibly recreationally, as far as the benefits. It addresses concerns that we will have in the future for growth and development. And this is just one more example of people taking a real look at where are we and what do we have, but what do we need in the future, and the best way to go about getting it. Everything about this acquisition, including the cost, I am wholeheartedly behind, and I am going to support purchasing this property for the stated reasons. Thank you.
Okay, other counsel input or comments, or Counselor Heisen?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement with, or for the matern property.
Second.
Okay, and a motion and a second, authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the matern property. A motion by Counselor Heisen, seconded by Mayor Protim. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with our six counselors in session here. We'll invite Counselor Weisner back and move on to item number 8C, which is professional service agreement, fire department ladder truck, Seagrave Fire Apparatus, LLC. We have our fire chief here, Chief Merrill.
Thanks, Mayor. Evening, Council. As you remember from a workshop that we had a couple of weeks ago, I brought to you a little problem that we were having with our ladder truck. We had a nice conversation about that over the course of about an hour and 15 minutes about our ladder truck. What we're here tonight to do is to get an authorization to have the mayor sign a contract with Seagraves in the amount of $157,111.7 for the refurbishment, as was recommended by the council, for our ladder truck. That's the short part. Now here comes a little bit longer part. We know that from the refurbishment, there are going to be some other problems. So I don't want you to be surprised later on, when we come back to you and say, we need a little, a little extra money because of, and we know what some of the issues are, we don't know how much it's going to cost to get them fixed until it gets back to Seagraves. Specifically, the second fly section on the ladder, whether it can be repaired, replaced, or a brand-new purchased, or a new one built and purchased. We know we have some problems with the lift cylinders. We don't know how much that's going to cost until it gets back to Seagraves. We are going to have the vehicle trucked across country because of the weather conditions. As you saw in the agenda bill, there is an initial inspection that's going to be done on the truck, at which time, we will definitely confirm that a refurbishment is in the best interest of the truck and in the best interest of the city. Should it be determined that it's not in the best interest, Seagrave stops, we get a bill for not to exceed $5,000, and we're done. But after all the conversations I've had with Seagraves over the last month and a half, all the pictures back and forth and the discussions, they say this is an easily refurbishable truck, and it'd be a pleasure to work on. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have, and I tried to keep it as short as I could.
Thank you, Chief. First, ask the public if there's any questions or input, or, okay, seeing none, Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Chief. For the record, I have a few questions. I know the answers to these, but I'd like to have you state them publicly. So this truck is 27 years old, correct?
That is correct.
It has less than 17,000 miles on it?
That is correct.
And what would the cost of a new truck outfitted similarly to this be right now?
A million two to a million five.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all?
That's all.
Wow.
Yes, Counselor Ombert?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Merrill, do you have an expected top budget? If this goes back to Seagrave, what are you expecting the outside cost would be to refurbish this truck?
I'm, I'm thinking. That's a scary thing. It all depends, and, and that comes down to, the biggest concern that we have going into this is the second section fly section, as we talked at the workshop. If it's repairable, that's within the scope of work for the $157,000. If it's not repairable, and Seagraves has a second section fly assembly that they can rebuild, certify, and put on the truck, we're looking at about $20,000 for that fly section. If they have to build a new one, we're looking at about $50,000. So if we're looking at $157,000, and we look at the top end at $50,000, we're at 207. If they can repair the control valves, we're looking at about $2,000 on the pedestal. If not, it's about $10,000 for the, the control valve assemblies. We don't know about the lift cylinders. That could be in the neighborhood of $3,000 to $4,000 repair work on the lift cylinders. I do not anticipate this going anywhere over $250,000. I look at it to be the lower end of the $230,000 to $240,000.
I was trying to add things up while you were continuing.
How close am I?
Yeah, you're actually pretty close.
I'm pretty close, aren't I?
Yeah, you'd be between 225, 250, in that, in that range. So the total cost on the outside, the worst scenario for that, that we can expect right now, would be roughly 250. So that, it's 250 total?
Total.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's transport back and bringing the vehicle back to here.
That's correct.
That's all-inclusive, yeah.
Yep, okay.
And we're looking to buy, you know, five to seven years out of that truck more.
Maybe 10.
Maybe 10.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for our finance director. On the schedule, they gave the, the cost of the contract, within 30 business days, we need to pay them 45, I mean, $94,000 plus, and then an additional 42 from the customer within 10 business days of delivery, the third-party test results, and then $15,000 at the end. Is this normal, how they separate? I was just curious.
We actually contacted them, and they wrote an email, we'll be attaching to the signed, if you approve this, to the signed contract, that indicated that they are not, they are going to invoice this after they've received it. Because 30 days, we transport it there, they start looking at it, we would have had to start cutting a check 15 days in to get it to them within 30. So they've actually agreed that they will invoice it once they have the truck and they've inspected it. So that gives us plenty of time to cut the check.
All righty. And a comment to the chief, we had asked some questions about whether or not Anna Cordes might be able to pitch in and help if the Navy couldn't, and thank you, Chief, for doing the research on that. And so it looks good. I mean, it's possible without a technical interlocal agreement with them. So I appreciate the extra effort, Chief, for checking into that very much.
Other counsel questions? Yes, Counselor Ombert?
Thank you, Mayor. No other comments, then. I move that we authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Seagrave Fire Apparatus, LLC, for the refurbishment of ladder 81 in the amount $157,111.7.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second that is just like the recommended action motion by Counselor Ombert, and who got that second? That was Counselor Larson. Okay. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. We will move on to item number 8D at this time, supplemental agreement number one to the David Evans and Associates Consultant Agreement, Veterans Memorial Park Waterfront Trail Enhancement. We have our city engineer back, Mr. Bridges.
Thank you. This is a supplemental agreement to extend the contract for David Evans and Associates in the amount of $77,902 to provide site inspection, project testing, materials testing, and certification, special inspections of the park during construction. Earlier tonight, you approved in the consent agenda to go out to advertisement and, and supporting documents to Wash State Department of Transportation. This is housekeeping on the other side, so when we are, when we do award and do go to construction, we already have the inspection services in place. So it's staff's recommendation to approve this contract with David Evans and Associates in the amount of $77,902, and I will stand for your questions.
Okay, before we do, let's see if the public has any input or questions. Seeing none, Counselor Weisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it normal for the cost to oversee and bill and inspect a project to be 25% of the overall budget?
This is going to provide full-time inspection, eight hours a day, five days a week during the construction of projects. So that's why it's a little bit higher than what we normally think. You know, when we're inspecting a project in-house, our, our inspector's going out there a couple of hours a day, a couple of hours, you know, at a time, not actually on the project full-time. This is full-time inspection. There are certain site, special inspections that go along with this that require that full-time inspection and the materials testing. So it is, it, it does seem high, I agree with you, but it is for full-time, eight hours a day, five days a week, construction inspection.
And I, and I realize this is a state-funded grant, and, and that we have to follow all of the, the rules. I just, I find it incredible that between design and construction inspection, we're almost 60% of the budget. It's going to cost less to actually build this than it costs to design it and inspect it.
I, I think the actual construction cost estimate is $140,000. So we're not, it's less than half of the construction cost, but it's, it's a big number to boot, so.
It looks like we're spending about $144,000, $145,000 with, with Evans and Associates. And, and obviously, again, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear, obviously, all mandated by the, the grant funds and tied to the grant funds.
Right, and the big driver here is our DB Eagle, which are disadvantaged business enterprise, and then the wage analysis of the wage rate studies that have to go on at the same time. So we have to make sure that the, the employees are paid the prevailing wages, so there are interviews with employees during the day, making sure they understand what their wage scale is, and they're getting paid properly, so we don't get bit in the audit. All this comes back to the city if we get bit in an audit, that we have to possibly refund money back to the state or the feds in this case.
So the $72,000 is saving us from a $265,000 exposure?
That's correct.
That's what you're telling me. And this is about a four-month project, is that correct?
I, I'm not sure on the timeline. It's, the project was developed before I got here, so I'm not quite sure.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's multiple months for the $72,000.
I know they've got 480 hours of scheduled observation, so that's, what is that?
Three months at least.
Yeah, three months.
Okay, thank you.
Other counsel input or questions? Yes, Counselor Wessinger?
No other questions. I will make the motion authorizing the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement number one to the consultant agreement with David Evans and Associates that adds $77,902 to the contract, increasing the total contract amount from $14,834 to $92,736 for construction management and full-time construction inspection services on the Veterans Memorial Park Waterfront Trail Enhancement Project.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second, and the motion is exactly like, reads exactly like the recommended action in the packet. Motion by Counselor Wessinger, seconded by Mayor Protim Muns. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Also, thank you, Mr. Bridges. So we will go, we will now discuss item number 7A, ordinance number 1866, budget amendment number one to the 2019, 2020 budget. We have our finance director here, Patricia Sewell.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I am bringing forward the first budget amendment to our 2019-20 budget, and it is composed of two parts. The first part is for the Banta Road Roundabout Transmission Main Replacement Project, and it is for a million, the total project is now increased from $800,000 to $1,584,855, which is an increase of $784,855. The second one is for the fire ladder truck. We are asking council to approve movement out of cash in the general fund budget that was moved there from the stability fund excess into the beginning fund balance for the general fund to the tune of $167,112. If you look at page 525, I summarized it in, both of them in an Excel spreadsheet, that it's easier for me to kind of go through to help you guys understand. So the Banta Road project is increasing by $784,855. It is being funded by water fund balance in the, for $702,555. And the Navy's contribution is increasing by $82,300 for the 24-inch, which brings us from 800 up to $1,584,855. We broke out the project expenses, so we have $87,200 for professional services, $2,000 for advertising. We increased construction services by $595,655, and part, we added in $100,000 for the change order allowance. That's what got us to the $784,855. Now if we go to the fire truck, which is on the next bracketed section, it shows that our beginning fund, budgeted fund, beginning fund balance that's been budgeted in general fund is currently at $2,353,662. We are adding $167,112 to the beginning fund balance, and we're increasing the fire department's expenses for the repair and maintenance on the fire truck. If you look down here in the stability fund... If you look down here in the stability fund, I'm keeping track, so you guys can see what we're asking for. So we moved $1,569,343 into cash out of the stability fund that we did not budget. By budgeting this $167,112, it leaves $1,402,231 of the stability fund transfer not budgeted. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, first we'll ask the public if there's any questions or input. Okay, seeing none, we'll, yes, Counsel Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Soul, thank you for this specific page that you just referenced. I just want to remind my peers, when we went through the workshop and we talked about freeing up the stability fund, we all talked about making sure that it was earmarked, and there were very specific projects and purposes that this money was designated for. And Chief, I'm not taking anything away from you. I do support refurbishing that ladder truck versus buying a new one, but this is the first of an exodus out of those funds. So I want to make sure we're paying attention when we need some new parkland, or we need whatever we need, that this is one of the places that we talked about getting it, making sure that we kept track of that. So thank you for this page, I'm going to keep an eye on it.
Counsel Ombert.
Thank you. And on that fire truck issue, it's $167,000. What happens if the unexpected happens? We have to come back for a few more dollars? That means we have to amend this budget again?
So would it be a change order request that you guys would have to approve, and then I would follow that change order request with a budget amendment request?
And we could take that out of the fire budget?
We could take it out of beginning fund balance, or counsel could choose to use more stability fund. That would be a choice that I'm hoping that I would know about before I created the budget amendment. But yeah, so that would be the mayor and Blaine giving me heads up on how we want to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Blaine?
And we would likely do it the same way we did here. So just, yeah, and it's a good question, that's what I was going to make sure you're aware of, just like the fire chief mentioned, that there's a strong possibility that there's additional amount of funding. We base the purchase order in this, in this amendment based upon what we do know, but we know highly likely that there's going to be some unknowns that are going to come back at additional costs. So unless you direct us otherwise, we're going to assume the same way we did this and come back with an amendment and tap the cash that we have again.
And it's my understanding, or based on my memory from the workshop and all the discussions we've had about this item, is that there is some contingency funds included in that $167,000.
No.
We had some ranges in there, because we don't know exactly how many.
The range, well, it started out with $157,000, and then we added $10,000 for transportation. But it's going to range, I think he put from $150,000 to $250,000, and so we feel that it's, it won't be over, we're hoping it's not going to be over $250,000. If it is, then we'll probably reassess. And that actually pushes it into the retrofit, which is a lot more money, and I don't know whether it's worth to put that much money beyond $250,000 into the 27-year-old truck. But we're hoping it's, the odds are in our favor that it'll be under $250,000. We had a lot of talk about staff, whether we just build it with it, but normally we don't put contingency, we do in construction contracts, but not in purchase order repairs like this. So we just want you to wear that it's going to come in two phases, which is what we know now. Once it gets there, they'll do the assessment, and we'll get a firm, firm commitment on what the additional costs are, and then we'll come back and do another amendment agenda, and then I would draw it the same way that we did now. I'll ask you to direct that, though, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I just state, so because we did the project accounting the way we've done it this year, when projects start bumping up against the budget that's there, I'll be doing what I did tonight. So for Banta Road, when we got the bids in and they were higher than what the estimates were, I will be coming forward with a budget amendment identifying the revenue stream as well as increasing the project total. So that's different than what we've done in the past, but I feel like it's more transparent, and it tells us truly what we expect the cost to be.
Okay, any other questions, input? Yes, Counsel Servadius.
No other questions. I move to approve budget amendment number one to the 2019-2020 biennial budget for Banta Road Roundabout Transmission Main Replacement Project and Fire Ladder Truck Repairs.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in second. The motion is just like the recommended action in your packet. Motion by Counsel Servadius, second by Counsel Heisen. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We are now at item number 10A, city council work phone discussion, and I think we've got our Counsel Servadius scheduled to talk about this. Before he starts, I want to say that Counsel Servadius has been like our new employee the last, I don't know how many months, he has spent in the various departments around our city helping install our new phones and our new equipment. And I can't thank him enough, because I don't see his name on the payroll other than as a city council person. Can't thank him enough. Thank you, Mr. Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just talking from here. Oh, wait. So the whole purpose of this is just to introduce Ring Central to the council, if you're not familiar with it, and then you guys need to decide if you want to use it or not. Long story short, as we transition the city's phones over to VoIP phones, along with that comes an application with a soft phone app. So you can use that on a cellular device, a mobile device, or a tablet. And there's, if you're going to, first decision is, just for total transparency, each one of these lines, tax, title, tags, costs us about $20 a month. I don't know if we add all those fees, that's just an approximation. So if you don't see yourself using it, we need to know that, and then we'll just let those numbers go. But if you do want to use it, it's available. So I'm just going to take you through the app, and I use this personally on, well, I have a business version of this that I've used for many years. So I use that on my cell phone, but for council, all of my telephone stuff is done on my iPad. And it's super simple, super easy to use. There's two apps, unfortunately, the screen is not the best up there. But if you go look at this on an Android or in the Apple Store, there's two versions of the Ring Central app. One is called Ring Central Phone, it's simpler, I recommend that one. The other one is this one that has the fancy R, and it has more functionality into it, but it's probably features that many of you may not use, you might. Scheduling meetings, stuff like that. So the Ring Central Phone app is very straightforward. It's going to feel kind of like making a phone call on your regular cellular device. Is that as good as we get up there? Yeah. All right. You guys see this screen? So you've got, down at the bottom here, if you have messages, you have messages. I had Deena call me, so there's a message right there. Recent calls, contacts, keypad to make a normal phone call, and then you can do much more as far as jumping out and scheduling meetings with that last icon, but we're going to not do that. So phone calls, what you need to know is if you're using this on your city device, it's totally separate from your, even if you're using it on your personal cell phone. You could use the soft app. All of the calls are placed through Ring Central. They don't go out over your cellular network. And you can actually choose right up here what you want the caller to see as far as a caller ID. I know you can't really see that up there, but you can choose, you all have a direct dial number, which for me is buried in the list up here somewhere. You could have it, for most of you, you're probably going to have it show up as the main city phone number of 279-4500. But it's a phone, it's a keypad, you dial and people answer. And whether you're talking through the speaker in your iPad, I always put in my, or I often just use headphones, and I'll make calls that way and return calls. Other things that I think are worthy of note in here is, if you want, you can have it sync with all of your personal contacts, or not. And you can have it, it'll just sync with the city's Outlook system, so you'd have all of staff's contacts in here. So if I start typing, let's say, Soul, if you didn't know Patricia's extension, you'll see Patricia Soul show up right up there. You can just click on her extension, and then it's simple as hitting the little phone icon, and I'm calling Patricia. So it's really handy if you don't know staff extensions, they're all right here. And once again, you have the option of whether or not you sync it with your own personal contacts as well, or if you don't, the default is it syncs with all of the city Outlook contacts. Long story short, too, on messages, what's handy, so Deena called me earlier. If it is a new message, it is blue. If you had messages that had been listened to, they'd be black. So I can click on the message from Deena, I can listen to it very easily. You can't hear it, because you can't hear my speaker. And then if I wanted to call Deena back, I just hit the big green button, and I'm calling Deena. So super simple, very easy. I think what I wanted to just, to show my peers was, you can do it all on your city iPad. You don't have to use your cellular device if you don't want to. But if you want that functionality, you can also use it as a soft app on your phone. But all of the calls are tracked and stay out in the city system total. You could run a log if you wanted to, track it all out there. But I understand some people want to keep their personal device totally separate, so I'll get my iPad back in a minute. But any questions on that functionality? Like I said, just communicate with Patricia or Deena if you don't see yourself using that, and I'm happy to spend time off-camera doing any training or teaching. But if you don't decide to use it, or you don't think it's something you would use, just let us know, because it probably doesn't make sense to pay for the numbers.
Any questions? Yes, Counsel Wessinger.
You answered my question. I was going to ask if this came with a personal training session to show me how to do that, because I think it does. And, you know, my first reaction was, oh, man, would I really use that? But, and maybe we can talk about it more in a workshop when we have more time just to ask questions. But to me, it seems very helpful from a council member and staff perspective that it would be real easy for me to call a staff member if I had a question, and have that be also helpful for public records, possibly. Is it, does that make sense? Nikki, do you think for us, maybe a little more helpful on your guys' part for public records requests?
So the phone aspect of it isn't really important for public records requests. There's a messaging function that we've been discussing, and there is a method of capturing those, which we've also been discussing, which is going to be helpful if that's the route we go. But for purposes of the phone, that is something that is captured internally in the city's Ring Central system, and so we're good to go there.
Thank you.
Counsel Servadius.
Well, just, and so I've got it set up, you can turn on notifications. So if I was to get a message, I have it email me, not the message, because we've decided not to attach audio files to the messages, but it just says, you've got a voicemail, and a little notification pops up. You could swipe down on your iPad, you've all seen the different notifications. So that's how I know I have a message. I'll get a notification that flashes on the iPad, and I get an email that says you've got a message.
Yes, Counsel Heisen.
Do we have to tell Deena if we want this, so she can send credentials? Because I downloaded the app, so it wants me to sign in and says I have an existing account, and I need to enter my credentials. I don't know what that means.
Yes, so, or I can do it, we send it, it's just a welcome email you get that says log on to your account, but I can walk you through setting that up, it's pretty.
Oh, that's what I did, but it told me I have the wrong password, even though I just set up an account, so.
We can send you an invite.
Anyone else? Well, again, thank you. Thank you, Joel, on hard work, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other counsel business? So as you drive home tonight, remember that it's icy out there. So if you're walking, remember that it's icy out there, and be safe. And I guess, seeing no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We didn't announce that the schools were...